Good evening. I'm Allen Joins, Mayor of Winston-Salem, and I call to order this September 18th meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council and ask the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Mundy.
Present.
Councilmember Cipio.
Present.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
And Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Thank you very much. Would you please join the city council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you. And would you please join the city council and me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Sergeant Arms tonight is Lieutenant Joshua Best. Lieutenant, thank you for being with us tonight. May we have the first honorarium, please?
Item H1, proclamation declaring October is Fire Prevention Month. Whereas the city of Winston-Salem is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires caused more than 2,800 deaths in the United States in 2021, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 338,000 home fires. And whereas cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States, two of every five home fires start in the kitchen, with 31% resulting from unattended cooking. And whereas more than half of the reported non-fatal home cooking fire injuries occurred when the victims tried to fight the fire themselves, and children under five face a higher risk of non-fire burns associated with cooking than being burned in a cooking fire. And whereas City of Winston-Salem residents should turn pot handles towards the back of the stove, always keep a lid nearby when cooking, keep a three-foot kid-free zone around the stove, oven, and other things that could get hot, watch what they heat, and set a timer to remind them that they are cooking. And whereas City of Winston-Salem first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires almost in half, and whereas the 2023 Fire Prevention Week theme, Cooking Safety Starts With You, Pay Attention to Fire Prevention, effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Now, therefore, I, J. Allen Joins, Mayor of the City of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2023 as Fire Prevention Month, and I urge all residents to plan and practice a home fire escape plan twice per month.
Thank you. I want to call on our deputy fire chief and fire marshal, Chaz Browning.
Chief, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for helping bring attention to a very, very important issue. And I forgot to bring the mic. Chief, I'll start over. Thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for bringing attention to an extremely important issue facing our community. And I'll present this to you and the members of the fire department. I would invite you to say a couple of words if you'd like to.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of the council. As you heard, the majority of the fires occur in homes and residences versus commercial fires and businesses. And most of these are cooking fires typically when the kitchen is left unattended. It is with this in mind that the theme of this year's Fire Prevention Week is Cooking Safety Starts With You. Pay attention to fire prevention. This is a multifaceted approach to home fire safety that includes having working smoke detectors, proper cooking techniques, precautions, and education of our children, and never leaving your food unattended. I would like to thank the mayor and the staff in his office for preparing and presenting this proclamation, and for your support in helping keep everyone in our community out of the hot seat.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you very much. Councilmembers, before we go into the agendas tonight, without objection, I'd like to ask Kevin Cheshire, who is the executive director of the Winston-Salem Housing Authority, come forward and make a couple of comments about the Crystal Towers project. There's been some attention to that over the past few days. And I think Mr. Cheshire can give us the exact status of those work that's going on there.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll certainly be happy to try to do that. Mayor Protem, members of the city council, thanks for letting me provide a quick update about Crystal. You all may remember, we pursued a lot of different options for Crystal Towers going back several years. And in January of 2022, we sort of pivoted away from exploring those other options and committed to ensuring the long-term sustainability of Crystal Towers as affordable housing into the indefinite future. What we acknowledge is that across the country, HUD estimates we have $30 billion, with a B, of backlog capital need across public housing in this country. We certainly see that in our portfolio. The largest public housing communities that we own were built in the middle of the last century. And so with respect to Crystal Towers, we've acknowledged that there are some things that we can do, and there are some things that we cannot do alone. We're very thankful for the partnership from the city and from some other community folks who have been with us in this journey as we try to identify resources to address the backlog at Crystal Towers. So what we did in January 2022 was we identified a partner who could develop an initial assessment. Okay? And we did that. Took about six months to give us an initial assessment of the primary capital need over at Crystal Towers. Once we got that, we identified a four-phased approach. The first phase was to address the elevators. That's been well documented, that we've had a lot of issues with the elevators. There are two elevators that serve that community. So Phase 1 was addressing the elevators. Phase 2 was addressing the ancillary systems that were affecting the elevators. Primarily, we had a lot of water intrusion and drainage issues that were affecting the electrical components. So that was Phase 2. Phase 3 was going to be a full assessment, right? We had an initial assessment of the primary capital need. We need to go through that building, top to bottom, put it in a CAD program, get an architect, a design team, to show us what it would look like to bring that building current and ensure that it can be sustainable into the intermediate and long-term future. That was Phase 3. And then Phase 4 is going to be implementing that design plan. Phase 1 and 2 and 3, we can fund ourselves. We knew that going in, okay? So we have funded Phase 1, which is a complete replacement of both elevator cars at Crystal Towers, to the tune of approximately $800,000. So that contract was signed in June of 2022. There is extensive lead time in the elevator industry, okay? You have to fabricate these components. You've got to get them on site. So we signed the contract in June of 2022. The components were not delivered until May of 2023. It wasn't the elevator contractor's fault. It wasn't our fault. It certainly wasn't the residents' fault. That's just the reality of what we had, okay? There was a lot of supply chain residual that we were dealing with. And then, of course, there was a lot of construction demand coming out of COVID. So we got the materials in May of 2023, following a contract signed in June of 2022, following a decision to retain Crystal Towers in January of 2022. So we're less than two years out from the decision to ensure Crystal Towers was sustainable in the long term. We signed a contract, and we've begun elevator work. That first elevator car is anticipated to be done in November of this year. So November 2023, that first elevator car will be completely modernized, meaning completely replaced. Now, you cannot do that while the car remains in service, right? I mean, and we've talked about that. You have to take that one car out of service while it is being replaced. And we have done that. So Crystal Towers is down to one car, which is a problem. We knew that it was happening. The residents knew that it was happening. But it's a problem because if that one car goes down, you have no cars serving an 11-floor community. Case in point, that happened Sunday, with something as innocuous as a resident dropping a pin, and it would not allow the car door to close. So on Sunday afternoon, for about two and a half hours, neither car was working. It becomes an issue, right? We get our on-call texts out there. We have to contact our elevator contractor, who has to send their on-call texts out. We coordinate with the fire department in case we need life safety movement in and out of the building. We got the elevator car back up and running. Once that first car is complete, and be brand-new, fully modernized, we will start on the second car, which we estimate to take approximately 12 weeks. So we're looking at Q1 of 2024, having two brand-new elevator cars in Crystal Towers. And as I said, that contract was executed in June of 2022, and work has been ongoing since materials were delivered in May of 2023. That's Phase 1. Phase 2 is the ancillary components, the lobby, the laundry, excuse me, the laundry room and the main hallway. That contract was signed earlier this year. Work began out there in March of 2023. It was originally scheduled for completion in August of 2023. We ran into two issues. One was we identified asbestos-containing materials in the floor tiles. That was not previously known. We got a certified asbestos abatement contractor out there. They abated it. But because that was not in the original scope of work, the contractor got some additional days in which he could perform, okay? That was issue number one. Issue number two was a fire-rated ceiling. It was not in the original plans. It was not something that we knew we needed until we started doing demolition work out there on site. So we had to, again, do a change order, which took additional time. So that contractor is now obligated to complete its work by October of 2023. So the lobby, the laundry, the main hall, which will have dedicated security, it will have dedicated room for supportive services, that will be completed in October of 2023. The first elevator car will be fully modernized November of 2023, and the second elevator car will be fully modernized sometime in Q1 of 2024. After that is complete, we'll do that full assessment, which will take us probably to the summer of 2024. We will then have a dollar figure. That's what we haven't had. We have no idea what to ask you guys for financially, because we don't know. We've got to put a real scope of work together that says what we're going to do. We got to meet with the residents, which we've told them we will do. There will be a stakeholder group. We will talk about design options. We will talk about what is needed. We will modify the original design. We'll work with the design team, and then we'll identify a cost associated with that design. Once we know where that is, then we will know what funding sources to attack. The building didn't get like this overnight, and it's not going to get fixed overnight. But we have a plan in place. We have had a plan in place since January of 2022, when we pivoted and we committed to ensuring that Crystal Towers remained affordable housing into the long-term future, and we are implementing that plan. Work is ongoing. Literally, I was out there today. The elevator contractor was out there, and the lobby laundry hallway construction contractor was out there as well. Just with respect to financials, Crystal Towers, year-to-date, has lost $125,000. We get about $3,000 a door annually from HUD in capital subsidies. So that equates to about $600,000 for Crystal. And we've already put in about $1.2 million. So my point is, it's a need. It's the first project that we talk about in my board meeting every single month. But if we are pulling more than the fair share away from Crystal, other communities are suffering. And I just want us to all understand collectively, Crystal Towers is first and foremost in our development committee meetings, is first and foremost in our board meetings. But we've got a lot of other properties. We've got 1,200 units that we're trying to support with limited funding from HUD. And that's just the reality that we're dealing with, but we're trying to do it as expeditiously as we can. And doggone it, I know it's frustrating. It's frustrating when I'm out there and people aren't working. So I know that it's frustrating when the residents see that people aren't working. The bottom line is, we've got a contract with both contractors to be finished. They've given us a schedule. We have liquidated damages in place for the lobby and laundry contractor, and we plan to enforce that if it's not complete on time. But there are still labor shortages, right? It's still a tight labor market, and so sometimes these contractors have to demobilize, remobilize at another project and come back. But we've got project management teams out there that are monitoring them on a daily basis. And I'm certainly happy, Mr. Mayor, to take any questions about Crystal Towers.
Cheshire, just to confirm, the Housing Authority of Winston-Salem has not made a request to the City of Winston-Salem for any funding at this time?
That's correct. No, sir. No request has come at this time. No, sir.
But once you do your assessment, you'll come back to us, and we'll look at it.
That's absolutely right. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cheshire.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
Appreciate it. Tonight's agenda of the city council is comprised of two parts, the general agenda and the consent agenda. As always, the practice of this council to take the consent agenda as the first order of business. Items on this agenda have been unanimously approved by a committee of the city council or are being submitted in accordance with established city procedure. There'll be no discussion of the items on this agenda unless a council member requests that the item be removed, and it will be considered individually. Items not removed from the consent agenda will be voted on in one motion. The meeting is being televised tonight live on TV 13, and it will be replayed tomorrow at 9:30 a.m. and again tomorrow, 9:00 p.m., excuse me. Copies of our agenda, as well as videos of previous meetings, are always available online on the city's website, and just click on the "Watch Meetings" online option. Councilmembers, I'd like to pull Items C-21 and 24. Are there any items that you would like to pull?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
C-22.
Which one'd you do?
C-22.
I did C-11.
Okay. Is there a motion on the balance?
Motion for approval for the balance of the consent agenda.
Motion second to approve that. All those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. We'll go to Item C-11 first?
Item C-11, resolution authorizing to convey four city-owned lots located in the Cleveland Avenue neighborhood to Liberty East Redevelopment, Inc. for the purpose of increasing the supply of affordable housing for low- and moderate-income persons, as permitted by Session Law 2021-44 and SB 145, located in the Northeast Ward.
Justice Clark, you ask, Justice.
Yeah. I've got some questions and comments, and Ms. Tony, you probably will have to get back with me. But I don't have any concern, per se, on the motion. But it seems like, to me, we need to define at some point what the builder's going to build as far as size, shape, color, whatever. And once you do that, that will determine what it will cost to build that house, depending on the number of square footage, and what you're putting in it, and this, that, and the other. Because my fundamental question is, what will these houses? And this is one of, I think, three different proposals for selling lots for a dollar. What these houses are going to sell for, and how does that relate to people's expectations? So it's a multi-faced question, but what are they going to build? What's it going to cost them to build them? What are these houses going to sell for? And how does that relate to what people can afford? And I'll...
Ms. Tony?
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of the council.
Good evening.
Councilmember Clark, yes, I've spoken to, there's another item, actually, G1.
Yes, I saw that. Same question for them, too.
Same question. These houses, these lots are in the Northeast Ward. They have actually looked at the market value for the homes, potentially, based on the previous sales of the homes in that area. Obviously, we look at the area median income, AMI. So for a family of four, that's around $60,000 for income. And so there are opportunities for the homeowner, number one, to have down payment assistance if they've gone through financial pathways, or Center for Home Ownership to support them in home ownership. But also, the developer has estimated costs around $170,000, similar to Habitat, to build a home. They do project to sell for between $200 to $250 for the homes. That's what they will attempt to buy. Obviously, they need to come back to the city for gap financing, and that will be a separate request at another time. So they do plan to keep these affordable in the conveyance of that. They actually have to follow our affordable housing policies in the conveyance of the land. They'll purchase it for a dollar and follow all of those guidelines. The developers, in both cases, should have these completed within two years from the time of closing and the deal with the city, so...
Do you know how many square feet rocks with the houses?
They have that. I don't have that in front of me.
You can just get it to me.
But I'll get that to you. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem and councilmembers, each purchase and development agreement actually contains the designs that have been approved by the councilmember of the ward. So the house to be built is part of the agreement, as well as the square footage, what it's going to look like, garages, no garages, and so forth. But they're pretty much standard three-to-two-bedroom houses.
Clark, you ready to make a motion?
Yeah. I move approval of C-11.
Mayor? Second?
Second.
I've got a question. I've got a comment.
Yes, sir.
Just prior to tonight, I checked with city attorney, and all these deals that we're talking about here, as far as selling land, they all have shot clocks on them. It's a two-year time period, whereas if nothing happens on them, they come back to us.
That's great. Thank you, Justice.
That's correct.
All right. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Item C-21?
Item C-21, consideration of items regarding the donation from the Winston-Salem Police Foundation, resolution authorizing permission to accept equipment and resources from the Winston-Salem Police Foundation, and ordinance amending the project budget ordinance for the City of Winston-Salem for the fiscal year 2023, 2024.
I ask that this item be removed from the agenda. Scott, come on up. I wanted to, basically, on behalf of the city council and the City of Winston-Salem, is to thank you and the Police Foundation for these wonderful contributions, not just this, but the ones that have gone on with the Police Athletic League we had this summer. This will, among other things, provide bikes and uniforms for an auxiliary downtown bike patrol, which we're all very excited about. But Scott and members of the foundation, thank you so much for the work you're doing there. And I would invite you to say a couple of words if you'd like, and introduce other members of your foundation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, and the rest of the council. Appreciate this.
Give your name and address for the record, Scott.
I'm Scott Somerville, president of the Winston-Salem Police Foundation, and I have Angela Daniels with me of the Winston-Salem Police Foundation, and Justin Gomez as well. I thank you for, number one, your support of these investments that we're making into the community, because they truly are investments. They focus on the chief's key vision that he has and the key initiatives that his team is focused against. We have four pillars that we work together on, and that is youth engagement, where we're talking about youth scholarships, youth millennial scholars program, the Sweet Reeds truck that we've done in the past, as well as youth athletics. You referenced the T-Ball program. So we're very proud of the investments that we're making in our youth engagement programs. Community outreach programs are certainly very important to us and a key part of the pillars that we stand on, as well as officer health and wellness. Obviously, the engagement of officers in the community is better when that officer is fit, both mentally and physically. So we're very much supportive of those programs. Tied into that would also be the investment in technology. We need improved technology to increase the safety of the city. We got a great, great real-time crime center. We got the leadership that is supporting of the crime center, and we're making good progress on that. Bless you. What I would say in closing is, we are really proud of the work that we're doing today. We're doing good work, we believe, but we want to do great work. And that great work is going to need continued support from this audience, both yourselves as a council, but also the audience watching and listening. We need the individuals in the community that want to support the program from a financial standpoint to step up. We need business owners to participate in the Winston-Salem Police Foundation, and organizations to help support us in the Winston-Salem Police Foundation. So thank you very much for your time. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
And a special thank you to the Winston-Salem Police Department for their support and being here.
It's a great partnership. Thank you all very much.
Mayor, I move for approval of Item C-21.
Thank you. Second? Motion by Councilmember Taylor, second by Councilmember Cipio. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Now, Item C-22?
Item C-22, consideration of items regarding permanent financing for 216-unit multifamily rental development, known as the Lofts at Motor Road, to Winfield Properties, Inc. for $6,579,000, located in the Northeast Ward.
Justice Cipio, you ask for this one?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment on why I will not be supporting this particular project. I certainly am in favor of better housing in all of our wards, particularly those wards where the poorest people live. I have looked at the performer that we have on this particular project, and my main concern is whether we, as a city, are truly investing in the residents who need it the most. When I look at the performer, they're one-bedroom apartments, one bath. They're going to rent, the lowest one will rent at $394 a month. And that's a very reasonable rent. Quite low. The three-bedroom, two-bath apartment, the highest one would rent at $1,603 per month. But I look at the big picture, over 30 years, where these apartments would be restricted as affordable. The families that live in that lowest one-bedroom would have invested $141,000 in rent. And the families in the three-bedroom would have paid $577,000 in rent over the 30-year period. At the same time, I love investors who build houses. We need them. But on this project, the investor would net $15 million. And that's a for-profit investor. This is in our qualified census tracts. This is over 30 years. I just wonder, are we doing the right thing for lifting people out of poverty? Because I don't think this project will lift them out of poverty. And we're investing $6 million. It's a great investment. We're also going to sell the tract for a dollar. I don't have a problem with selling the tract to nonprofits. But I do have a problem when we sell tracts to for-profit businesses for a dollar. And the problem I really have with this particular tract of land, it is one piece of land, but it's 18 acres. I have a real issue, having seen what redevelopment did in East Winston, where people's homes were destroyed. The land came back and was sold to investors, and they built low-income apartments that are horrible now. I just don't know if that's the right policy this city should take. I am not going to vote for this because of that. I really don't believe this is our best effort to lift people out of poverty. And I would like people to think that we can do something different. I would not have an issue if that rent went to homeownerships and those apartments are converted to condos for the same period of time. The investor would make the same amount of money, but it would be homeownership. So the people would then start having some economic mobility. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I will...
Justice Burke?
Thank you so much. I'm going to say a few words. And then afterwards, I would like for Attorney Carmen to speak on how we have written into policy an opportunity for affordability to last for 30 years. The first thing I want to say is, I am working diligently to build single-family homes, because I know how important it is for first generations to have the opportunity to become homeowners and to begin generational wealth. We just had on the floor a motion for Liberty East Redevelopment to purchase four lots for the purpose of building four single-family affordable homes. We have on the agenda also four lots... We have on the agenda also four lots to be purchased by another not-for-profit builder to build four single-family homes, all east of Winston. And we have also sold four lots to Habitat, same purpose, four homes to be built, affordable to single families, to promote generational wealth, all east of Winston, to help to revitalize and transform a community that has been forgotten about, that has not been invested in for over 30 years. Now, let's face reality. Everybody's not looking to buy a home. There are some individuals who would like to rent. So, in my ward, just like in the East Ward and all of the wards, we have a balance. We have single-family homes that we are building for affordable housing purposes, as well as home opportunities to rent. And up here on this property, I have worked hard to make sure that we can have multifamily housing for individuals who are interested in renting. And I think that to have written into policy, and I'm not going to try to explain it, because the attorney can do it a lot better, but we went through the policies very deeply to make sure, if you can afford it today, you will be able to afford it for 30 years. You don't have to fear being put out, being evicted, because your income is not able to keep up with the growing rate of rent. So, up there, I'm proud to say, we will have 45 units that will be at a cost, an AMI cost of 30%, 50% of the units, that's 66, will be at a 50% AMI cost, 105, 80%, and then a total of 216. That is a great balance. But again, those rates will remain the same to protect anybody who has a desire to rent, and there are those that have that desire for 30 years. Attorney Carmen, can you help me out?
Carmen, would you comment on this?
Yes, Mayor, Mayor Protem and councilmembers. As Councilmember Burke has indicated, the Affordable Housing Ordinance specifies that for multifamily residential properties, the affordability restriction has to be in place for 30 years.
Wonderful. Councilmember Burke, would you like to make a motion?
Move for approval for item C 22.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Burke, second by Mayor Protem Adams. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. The motion passes seven in favor, one opposed. Councilmember Siffio voting no on it. Item C 24.
Item C 24, resolution naming fire station 13 after former city manager Lee D. Garrity, located in the South Ward.
Thank you. I just wanted to pull this one off, just to recognize our friend Lee Garrity, who retired last year, and the council informally has agreed to this, this is the formal action on this. And Mr. Larson, this is in your ward, and I would recognize you for a motion if you're ready.
Well, there's probably nobody more worthy to have a fire station named after him. He worked very diligently to make this happen in the South Ward, and I would move approval of the resolution.
Second. Make your motion by Councilmember Larson, second by Councilmember McIntosh. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that's unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Larson. Well, now we'll go to the general agenda, which is comprised of the following. There's a resolution authorizing the conveyance of four city-owned lots for the purpose of increasing the supply of affordable housing. There's a resolution ratifying installation of a street mural. There's an ordinance amending the fiscal year 23-24 budget ordinance for federal housing funds. There's a resolution for support for the bridging the 52除 divide application, as well as the public comment period. The public comment period is a time set aside for citizens to voice their opinions on matters that are germane to city government. When the comment period is called, each speaker will be given three minutes for comments, and the total comment period will be limited to 30 minutes. May we have item G 1, please?
Item G 1, resolution authorizing to convey four city-owned vacant lots located in the Cleveland Avenue neighborhood to Globex Consortium LLC for the purpose of increasing the supply of affordable housing for low and moderate-income persons, as permitted by SL 2021-44 SB 145, located in the Northeast Ward.
This did come through the Community Development House and General Government Committee, so I'd recognize the chairman of that committee if she's ready.
Thank you, mayor. Members of the council, I move that we approve item G 1.
Second. A motion by Mayor Protem Adams, second by Councilmember McIntosh. Any discussion? Not all those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Item G 2.
Item G 2, resolution ratifying the installation of a street mural on Fourth Street by the United Way of Forsyth County and volunteers pursuant to Section 74-16 of City Code.
Mr. Fansler, do you want to tell us what we've got going here?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of city council. Good evening. Jeff Fansler, Director of Transportation. So, as you noticed, this is a motion to ratify the installation of the street mural on Fourth Street. You all noticed that it is existing today. A little bit of context here is that the nuance of the NCDOT and Winston-Salem DOT city relationship, where NCDOT owns the bridge, the city owns and maintains Fourth Street, which passes over the bridge. So context here was some back and forth on permitting and approvals, which ultimately delayed our formal approval and subject to coming through the proper committees of this city council before their planned event. So, we wanted to bring this back as an item to ratify what has been done and to formalize the process, which they did submit an application. It was reviewed and approved by our office. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Fansler? Great, thank you. Councilmember Siffio?
We, I wanted to just say that the mural is shaping up to be quite beautiful. It actually happened last Saturday with all of the artists outside painting the mural. So, I was concerned that, I thought this mural's already on the street, but thank you. It is the same one.
That's right.
Can I make a?
Yes, please.
Okay. I move that we approve G 2.
Second. Motion, second, the motion by Councilmember Siffio, second by Councilmember Taylor. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Item G 3.
Item G 3, motion to excuse Councilmember Burke from item G 4.
I think we do need to excuse Councilmember Burke as a, not sort of conflict of interest, but issue there on G 4. Is there a motion?
I move that we excuse Councilmember Burke from voting on item G 4.
Second. Motion by Mayor Protem Adams, second by Councilmember McIntosh. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous with Councilmember Burke abstaining. We'll now go to item G 4, and Councilmember Burke, you're excused.
Item G 4, ordinance amending the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget ordinances for the City of Winston-Salem, North Carolina for federal housing funds.
Councilmember Clark just did come out of Finance Committee.
Hang on a minute. I'll move approval.
Thank you. Councilmember Clark moves approval of item G 4. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mayor Protem Adams. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And the motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Burke being excused from voting there. Item G 5.
Item G 5, resolution of support for Piedmont Tribe Regional Councils bridging the 52除 divide application to the U.S. Department of Transportation's Reconnecting Communities and Neighborhoods Grant Program.
This is a resolution of support only. Is there a motion?
So moved to support the resolution.
Sure. Motion, second, motion by Councilmember Siffio, second by Councilmember Monday.
I have a question.
Excuse me, Mayor Protem Adams.
Again, would you repeat what this is? I know there's been a lot of discussion around it over the past couple of months or so.
Right. This is only a resolution of support. It does not bind the city to any dollars to this project. I think there's been some cautionary statements by members of the council, saying that we don't have a lot of money to invest in this project, if any, but we are supportive of the project in general. So that's the only thing this resolution does.
Mayor, if I can clarify, just it does, the $30,000 local match is included with this, just for clarification.
Thank you. Thank you, yes. All that, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And the motion passes you now. Councilmember Clark?
Before we go to open comment, can I make a brief comment?
Please, go ahead.
I just wanted to comment briefly on the issue of subsidies that we're giving to private folks for apartments and houses, whatever. A typical apartment, and it varies if it's one, two, three-bedroom, whatever, and you tend to have a combination of all that, but it's running developers about $200,000 to $250,000 per door, per apartment. Again, it varies a little bit. The project in question probably is about a $45 million project. We're given about 12%, 13% of that. We do not have a lot of folks standing in line. These are projects that I think are marginally profitable for companies that know what they're doing. But when you got a $40 million project, we're coming in at $6 million, they're probably taking out a $20 million loan from a bank at 6%, 7% interest. And if you run all the numbers together at the end, there's a little bit of money out there. But they're not people standing in line wanting to do this. The profit's not there. There are a lot of apartments going up in this city, and you can see where they're going, but they're not going in these neighborhoods. And I don't have any trouble kicking in that last little bit that they need to make them work. But what we have found, there's some companies out there that specialize in this. There's some low-income tax credits and things like that, that you really require a lot of expertise on how to handle all that type stuff. But if they were as profitable as everyone thinks they are, there'd be a long line of people standing in. But this land has been empty. Has it ever had anything on it?
No, nothing but timber.
It's been empty since the beginning of time, basically, because the numbers do not work for most folks. And if you think you can build a $200,000 apartment and rent it for $400 a month and make much money, run the numbers. They're tight. So I just don't want people to think out there that there are folks ripping off the city. We're begging these people to do these projects, and the money involved is quite large, and it's a very thin margin, if you really dig down and really test the numbers. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. You're right. We have a goal of 750 units a year, and our manager, Tony, sent us out of the list earlier, two weeks ago, that showed her plans on how we're going to get there this year, so we're excited about that. Mayor. Councilmember McIntosh.
Just to add to what Councilmember Clark said, this money's not a grant, it's a loan. This money comes back to us with interest paid.
Councilmember Burke.
Thank you, mayor. I want to say thank you to Councilmember Clark for that clarity. And I also want to say, for almost three years, I have tried to encourage developers to come and build in northeast Winston-Salem. I have talked to developer after developer after developer about building on this lot up here, and we were fortunate to be able to get this developer to agree. Everybody else told us no, because the numbers did not make sense for them. The numbers did not work for them. It is very important for us to have development in this location and to revitalize and transform the locations that I am working on. We have, as many of you know, a food desert in northeast Winston-Salem, specifically in these locations that I'm heavily focused on. And the only way to attract a grocery store is to increase the number of rooftops and the area median income. All of that is being put into consideration every time we try to develop, every time we try to build and increase the number of rooftops and the area median income. The ultimate goal is to add to the Northeast Ward what we do not have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Burke. We'll now go to the public comment period. Again, this is, we set aside 30 minutes and ask citizens who'd like to address this on matters that are germane to city government. Again, when you come up, if you would give your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. And first person, I believe it's Mr. Bell, I can't quite make it out, Mr. Bell, who wanted to speak about Happy Hill. Good evening.
Councilman.
Good evening.
My name is Will Bell, Minister Bell. I'm the associate minister at Rising Ebenezer Baptist Church in Happy Hill Gardens. My concern was, the land was that they're speaking of selling for a dollar. There are members of our church that had inquired about purchasing the land, but they were told they were unable and didn't qualify, but not to get involved in the politics and religion, not to mix. Our concern is that it is our neighborhood. Why not build houses that are affordable for the people that live in that neighborhood that would like to own homes? If Habitat for Humanity are going to build the homes, and HUD is going to finance them, why not, why build homes at a price that the neighbors can't afford? Why not build homes in a price range of $60,000 to $70,000 instead of $200,000 to $300,000? That was our general concern.
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is Terry Bottoms, and I live at 3,000 North Patterson Avenue, Northeast Ward. I've lived there for eight years. I loved my home and fell in love with the architecture of these 100-year-old houses on North Patterson Avenue and adjoining streets. For the last two years, I've been communicating with the Winston-Salem Police Department, Winston-Salem Transit Authority, two different councilmen, liaisons, as well as the mayor. I've come to the conclusion that this area is like the broken window theory. But broken window theory, I don't understand why. I sit on my front porch, and I see traffic coming from every state in the United States as they make their way to the most prestigious college in the United States. Many use their GPS instead of following the signs to Akron Drive. I see many faces as they're pissing out the window to look at our city, Winston-Salem. Once they get close to the destination using their GPS, they ramp off at Exit 25th and 28th Street and take that left, or they come down North Patterson from Akron Drive, turn towards Deacon Boulevard. What they see, I'm ashamed. It is Detroit. Overgrown yards, trash, and even grass growing in the road from the curb. We need to help enforce the codes and regulations already in place. I've seen tall grass and trash all year long. Some have finally been cited after reaching out to liaisons or city councilmen, but so far, only one has showed any improvement. I'm aware of the codes and the regulations, as well as the 30 days to comply. This is not being enforced. As the 30 days to comply is not being enforced, it's the same as not having any codes at all. I've requested a city trash can at bus stop 2945 as a bench to keep individuals off the front porches of the home at 2945. In the past two years, the city has managed to pour two cement slabs for trash cans, but still no trash cans. 3044 is the most problematic area with individuals sitting, lying on sidewalks, steps, and retaining walls. Sometimes there's up to 12 more individuals there, drinking beer, smoking crack, whatever. The area was cited for trash and cleaned up within a day, but three days later, still black like it was. The police tell me there, the police tell me there's nothing really they can do since it's a public sidewalk. I have requested a no loitering sign be put there. I have requested a no loitering sign be put there, but I don't really see that happening.
Mr. Bottoms, your time is up, sir.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Norma Corley?
Norma Corley, 1516 Pleasant Street here in Winston-Salem. Good evening, Mayor Joins, Mayor Protem Adams, and members of the city council.
Good evening.
I've spoken to several of you individually, but this is my first time addressing the entire board. As I said before, my name is Norma Corley, and I live in zip code 27107, an area that is tremendously diverse in every aspect, ethnicity, income, and age, just to mention a few. Thank you for presenting plans to bring affordable housing into our community. It is much needed. With the funds from the Inflation Reduction Act, there's another way to improve the quality of life with people in my area. These funds can be used to improve weatherization of homes that have been in the neighborhood for many decades. And though the homes may be well-built, many lack the up-to-date features that could reduce the expense on the homeowner to heat or to air-condition the home, and also could help to improve the health of the residents by reducing pollution from the oil and gas furnaces. On top of these issues, the people who need the weatherization of their homes the most are getting deferred because of maintenance issues in their homes. Even though they may be financially eligible for the Weatherization Assistance Program, these maintenance issues prevent them from moving forward in this process. We're looking to get funds within the IRA to help bridge these gaps and inequities. Please spread the love in allocating these funds equitably, not equally, because some areas are more needy than others. Thank you for your consideration, and have a blessed night.
Thank you, Ms. Corley. Samuel Greer?
Hi, my name is Samuel Greer. I'm a resident of Crystal Towers, 25th Way, 6th Street. I love my city and the place I reside. The mayor, sir, you made a statement a couple of years ago concerning the monies or funds to help Crystal Towers through the halls. You know, halls is almost broke, if not broke, but they need help from the city. You know, they need help from the city. It's a nice place to live, close to downtown, you know, transportation, stores, drugstores, you know. And I like where I'm at. I'm 76 years old, and I don't have no plans on moving out. I'm a fighter. I'm a member of Crystal Towers United. I'm being targeted, but it don't matter. You know, it really don't. I'm just, for the sake of the people that's there, we are handicapped, we're elderly, and we just need the city to step in. And the elevators, you know, like, we had a breakdown yesterday, which was Sunday. It didn't last long, about four or five hours, but that's besides the point. God forbid, we don't have no fire or no dire emergency, but if the city of Winston-Salem can help the Housing Authority, you know, with the funding, it would be highly appreciable. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. Eunice Campbell? Eunice Campbell?
Eunice Campbell, 5743 Antinam Drive, 27106. Good afternoon, Mayor Joins, Mayor Protem Adams, and council.
Good afternoon.
I've just been listening to and reading as well, I'm a lifelong learner, and knowing people who have been with the Housing Authority for 15 years, I know personally that the elevators in the towers have been an issue for over 10 years. So that I do know. And the lack of putting money into that building where you had residents was intentional because of a plan to eventually get rid of it. I get it, why put all this money in when we're going to get rid of it? Whatever, whatever. But today, I witnessed the, we're doing this, we're doing this, we're doing that, ha-ha speech. But that's like giving someone a cold and then expecting them to thank you because you gave them a cough drop. This should have been done. There's no excuse for it. There should be nothing but apologies. Apologizing, apologizing, whether you were there or not, when you picked up the work, that means that you picked up the responsibility. So don't expect people, the residents of Crystal Towers, to thank you or be grateful or gracious about anything that's going on, because this is just stuff that should have been going on over 10 years ago, and we wouldn't be here tonight. And as far as the housing in Winston-Salem, yes, every city council member should be out there begging, because the city council that came before you, and some of you who've also made decisions that have put the residents in the spots that they're in now that they can't afford their housing, where you can't afford, where you have to subsidize housing because you sat back and watched the county commissioners devalue people's property to the point where, no, you can't build a $100,000 or $200,000 house between a $50,000 and a $30,000 house. That doesn't make sense. So yes, beg, beg, beg.
Chanita Johnson? Chanita Johnson?
Good evening, Mayor Joins. Good evening, Protem. Good evening to the city council members. I'm Chanita Johnson, and I'm a resident at 2411 North Patterson Avenue. And I don't live near Crystal Towers, but I have issues with the fact that the residents of Crystal Towers has to come outside and it has to state for media on what is happening in their residence. They are elderly, there are people who have issues, physical issues. And the fact that the elevators do not work, I understand the gentleman has talked about the reasons why this is occurring, but you still have people who cannot go up and down those stairs. And if they do, it takes them quite a while. They'll miss whatever vans that are there, they will have to be there and wait on them. They will have to probably get off their own schedule in order to do this. But when you have elderly people who are going up and down flights of stairs, who really have physical ailments, I think it takes more than just to say that, well, you know, we could not get all of this because of COVID, or because the people involved with the elevator companies were having issues. The city of Winston-Salem really needs to do something for these residents. They have tried, and as my friend Ms. Campbell has said, it's been 10 years concerning those elevators, and they have not put what they need to into them to continue for them to work. So we need to really take a look at what is going on in Crystal Towers. And I think that every council member should go and see what is happening in Crystal Towers for these residents. Should come there and see what it is that they need and why they need it. This is not something that they can just say, okay, well, we can wait on the elevators, we can, you know, hopefully not have a fire. This is something that is really dealing with lives. And it is important to understand that these are people. They may be elderly, they may be sickly, but they are still people. They are residents, they pay taxes. And they want where they live to be as nice as any other place in this town. And I don't know if any building can operate without having the elevators working. I don't even know if it's legal. So I think it's very important to take a look at this, and I appreciate your time.
Deborah Howell? Deborah Howell?
Good evening. I just want to say good evening to everyone first.
Good evening.
My name is Deborah Howell, and I live at the Crystal Towers. And the main thing is, what one of my concerns is, and my main concern is, like the gentleman spoke and people have spoke, is those elevators. And one particular morning, I had an appointment, I ride the TransAid van, and they can only wait five minutes, and then they drive on off. And to me, I have meltdowns in both of my knees, and it's hard, and I get shots in my back and everything. So coming down those steps, I can't do it. It's hard. One morning, like I say, I had an appointment, catched the TransAid van. I found out that one elevator was shut down. So I'm thinking, what am I going to do? Happened to gentleman, I say, well, I might as well start trying to get down that elevator, down the steps, I'm sorry. And the gentleman came behind me, young man, I was on the fourth step of the first flight. I live on floor seven. He said, madam, do you need some help? I said, yes. I say, I'm trying to get down the steps. And you have to excuse me if I start shaking, because I can't stand on my knees, on my legs. And he took my walker on down the steps the first flight, then he went to the second flight. And I have to walk step by step. I can't make no regular steps. So he said, I said, he said, you okay? I said, I'm okay. I said, just go head on down. By the time I got to a fourth level of steps, the ambulance attendants were coming up. They asked me, are we coming for you? I said, no. I said, I'm just trying to get down the steps. Plus, I have a breathing problem. And I was out of breath, but I finally made it down. And when I got down to the bottom, the van was still sitting there. Two people were down there that lived there in the complex. They said, well, one of them said, if I known you had an appointment to come down the steps, I would have came up there and got you. But like I say, not only for me, I look at everybody there. If you have a fire that break out, we got walkers, we got people in wheelchairs. If a fire break out, somebody ain't going to be able to get down.
Ms. Howell, thank you.
Many of people ain't going to be able to get down.
Thank you, Ms. Howell.
But I just want y'all to put into that consideration, and thank y'all so very much.
Thank you, Ms. Howell.
If you are able to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ben Greider?
Good evening. Ben Greider, 175 Brown Dell Street. I encourage the city to listen to the residents of Crystal Towers' concerns and expedite fixing these issues like they are life and death. I'm actually here tonight in regards of Agenda Item C6, Resolution approving the purchase of public safety cameras and their installation service. I would like to ask the city council what justification they have for these expensive new cameras, that costly contract with a private security company associated with them. There's only one sentence in this action request giving any reason for them, and it merely states the justification is that they have been requested. Some of the police chiefs in this very room tonight could not even provide evidence or sources to support the idea, the more cameras in the community, lower crime rates, when asked just the other week. We know from studies and scholars, the video surveillance cameras do not reduce violent crime, and only in limited circumstances have they been proven to reduce property crime. So how then does this $900,000 expense contribute to making the public safer? I would like the city council to consider, going forward, what kind of city they want to be a part of creating. In 2018, Chief Justice Roberts wrote in Carpenter versus United States that a person does not surrender all Fourth Amendment protections by venturing into the public sphere. If mounted on community centers like this resolution outlined, surveillance cameras risk revealing a person's familial, political, professional, religious, and sexual associations, which are very much privacies of life that the Supreme Court in Carpenter suggested receive protection under the U.S. Constitution. So instead of spending more on expensive and endless project, I encourage the city council to reallocate its bloated public safety budget into more community care-oriented programs that address violent prevention and poverty reality and serve the public. The Bear Team, SOAR, and other programs that have begun recently are a good start, but it's only that, a start. Our budget is a reflection of our values, and creating a heavily surveyed city with underserved population should not be where our value lies. Thank you, I received my time.
Thank you. Dan Rose?
Good evening. My name is Dan Rose. I live at 2054 Craig Street. Thank you for letting me speak. I noticed a lot of agenda items were polled from the consent agenda tonight, a lot of patting yourselves on the back, a little bit of debate, which was good. I'd like to poll Item C20. Has anybody talked about this one tonight? You're going to give over $5 million to Major League Baseball? Because they've said, we're going to take your minor league club away if you don't give us all this money. And you just say, yes? You could take that stadium and turn it into housing. Did you ever think of that? And they've done it in other places. Because what you did in the first place was you displaced Watkins and Granville, historic African-American neighborhoods, in order to build a little playground for rich people to come and watch baseball. I like baseball. It's the American pastime. But now here you are, 13 years later, with still a pretty brand-new stadium, and tonight you've gone ahead without any debate and given Major League Baseball five, over $5 million? That's just the first step. You're going to give them almost $2 million. We didn't talk about that either. So we've got some big issues that aren't being discussed tonight. We've got a situation where we are begging developers, and I get it. We don't have a lot of great solutions out there, but I'm here to suggest a couple. That you support HAWS, our public housing. We don't need developers if we have public housing. We have a situation where the mayor here has wanted it on the record that HAWS has not asked for the money yet. He wants to pass the buck here. But you all got up on the big stage in January of '22 and said, we're going to save Crystal Towers, right? Did you lose each other's phone numbers in the meanwhile? Because we need you to come together right now. We're talking about Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3, Phase 4. Why do we have to wait for Phase 4? Why can't we, right now, figure out what these apartments need? We're talking to residents all throughout this chamber, who are living with holes in their ceilings, living with extreme maintenance issues, that there's no need to wait. All right? So we're going to add. So we're going to ask you if HAWS won't ask you, and I sympathize with our HAWS leadership. You know, this country hates public housing, and they hate the people who live there. And we want you to change that here in Winston-Salem. We could be leaders in investing in public housing. Thank you.
Bill Vancotto?
Good evening, Mayor Joins, Mayor Protem Adams, council members. My name is Bill Blancott. I live at 1860 New Shore Court in the South Ward. I want to begin my comments by thanking you for passing a resolution in November 2020 setting renewable energy goals for the city. You set some commendable goals in that resolution, but I'm really here tonight to encourage you to start doing the work to reach these goals. From what I can tell, nothing or next to nothing has been done to reduce the city's greenhouse gas emissions by 40% by 2025. Very little has been done to reduce the energy use of the buildings and vehicle fleets by 2030. I think it's time for the city to either hire someone in-house to develop a plan to meet these goals, or engage a consultant that can come up with a plan to see if these goals can be met in an affordable, cost-effective manner. The school system adopted a plan about a year ago or late last year. I understand they've engaged an outside consultant to look at the school system's energy use, and that consultant gets paid only if they actually start reducing the energy use. Doesn't hurt for the city to talk to someone like that either. This isn't getting any better. It's not going to get any easier. The longer you wait to start reaching these goals, the harder it's going to be. One of the earlier speakers spoke about the Inflation Reduction Act and tax monies and rebates available to homeowners to upgrade their homes with weather eyes and install heat pumps, that sort of thing. Goal number three of this resolution you passed almost three years ago is to develop programs to assist vulnerable communities in reducing their energy costs and increasing their neighborhood's environmental quality of living. The federal government passed the Inflation Reduction Act last year, which provides billions of dollars to communities across the United States to do exactly that. And I encourage the city to, again, put someone on staff to help guide homeowners through that process, publicize the benefits that are there, so that our community can take advantage of it, our housing stock can be improved, and we start generating, creating some jobs in the city in upgrading the housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vancotto. Matthew Myers?
I live at 2844 Wesleyan Lane. Thank you for this opportunity to speak, and as Mr. Blancotto said, thank you for that 2020 resolution. It seems that tonight's theme is affordable housing, and thank you for listening to all the people in this room, and I do hope that you'll consider what they say. It puts me in the mind of what Mr. Blancotto just read to you. The third item on that 2020 resolution, which you all voted for, had a great idea. It said that the city should, and I quote, "Develop programs to assist vulnerable communities in reducing their energy costs and increasing their neighborhood's environmental quality of living." Sorry, I don't have my glasses on. It was a great idea you had three years ago, and we should do it. You got pretty lucky. The federal government just passed billions of dollars to mean that mostly, you don't have to put a lot of money into this. There's money especially directed at low and moderate-income neighborhoods to do this, and there's tax breaks for those who earn more. The city needs to lead a coalition of groups to get this done. You can't really do it yourselves. You're understaffed. I hear that every time I come into this chamber. And at the same time, we can't really do it without you. We need a coalition. We need organizations like Power Up NC, because they have expertise in the Weatherization Assistance Program, and they have credibility in Black and Brown communities. We need the Ministers Conference and the Emerging IAF Coalition for their reach into a wide diversity of congregations, neighborhood associations, and community organizations. We need contractors who are going to hire new workers to get this job done. We need the people at Forsyth Tech who are going to train those apprentices and journeymen. We need people at Winston-Salem State where the student body, many of them have a deep personal connection to these issues, and their faculty have a deep intellectual curiosity and research on environmental justice. We need connections with Wake Forest University where there is a strong tradition of student volunteerism. We need the banking community to help figure out the creative solutions for financing of bulk purchasing to make this cheaper. I think I could go on, and I think you probably could too, but I'll just name three more organizations that we need. The Audubon Society, the Sierra Club, and the Piedmont Environmental Alliance, because they are people who can go to a bureaucracy and hold our feet to the fire to make sure we actually do this, to do the thing that you said we wanted to do three years ago: develop programs to assist vulnerable communities in reducing their energy costs and increasing their neighborhood's environmental quality of living. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you very much. That ends our public comment period. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move forward to adjournment.
Second. Motion, the second, by a motion by Mayor Protem Adams, and a second by Councilmember MacIntosh to adjourn. All those that favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? No. You're adjourned.